I'm going to call the board this regular meeting, Page County School Board.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
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 Yes. Please pause for a minute or five. We prepare for the meeting. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Huber, do you have any agenda changes?
No.
Going to have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alter and a second by Mr. Painter to approve the agenda as presented.
Ms. Alter.
Yes.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Ms. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan.
Yes.
I would like to certify that all personnel matters discussed in closed session was followed by Section 2.2-3711A.
Second. The motion by Ms. Sullivan Smith and a second by Ms. Alter to certify personnel matters discussed in closed session.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Ms. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Clark.
Yes.
Yes. Going to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
The motion by Ms. Urbanfield, second by Ms. Sullivan Smith to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Urbanfield.
Yes.
Ms. Clark.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Clark, all state recognition.
Ready? Well, what an exciting night for us as a school board and a community to recognize all of our student athletes who achieved state recognitions this year. So, board members, community, we will call each student up by school. We're fortunate to have a packed house tonight, and that's the way that it's meant to be. So, students, when we call your name, please come up, and Ms. Clark will present you a certificate, and we will read everyone's name, even if they're not able to be here this evening. So, thank you all, parents, students, and congratulations on all of your awards. First, we'll call up Shyla for FCCLA State Competition Parliamentary Procedure Team, first place. Not present. Congratulations, Shyla. Lucy Curry, State Indoor Track, All-State Team, fifth place, 55-meter hurdles. All right. James Pharoah, Indoor State Track and Field, 55-meter hurdles, fifth place. All right. And Alexis Fuenor, FCCLA State Competition Parliamentary Procedure Team, first place. All right. Jacob Garber, FCCLA State Competition Parliamentary Procedure Team, first place. Congratulations. Jaden Harris, FCCLA State Competition Parliamentary Procedure Team, first place, National Power of One Award winner. All right.
They're trying to get out on me.
Trevor Hagan, Debate and Forensics, second place, Extemporaneous Speaking. Osmani Jackson, Indoor/Outdoor, State Track and Field, All-State Team, 300 hurdles, third place, 800-meter run, seventh place, 500-meter dash. Congratulations, Osmani. All right. Blake Jenkins, Basketball, Boys Basketball, second team. Congratulations, Blake. Maya Jenkins, Outdoor State Track and Field, Indoor State Track, All-State Team, 800-meter relay, fifth place, 4x8 team, fourth place. Madison Jesse, FCCLA State Competition, Silver Medalist and Career Investigation Project winner, Career of Alt. Davy Johnson, Indoor/Outdoor, State Track and Field, All-State Team, 800-meter run, third place, 1,600-meter run, fourth place, 3,200-meter run, sixth place. Congratulations, Davy. Emily Kramer, Outdoor State Track and Field, Indoor State Track, All-State Team, 800-meter relay, fifth place, 4x8 team, fourth place. Then lastly, for FCCLA LHS, as a school, Luray High School FCCLA Chapter was awarded the Gold Outstanding Chapter Award and received seven national programs and a public relations ribbon. Congratulations, LHS. Madeline Maddox, Debate and Forensics, first place, impromptu speaking. Christina McLean, Outdoor State Track and Field, All-State Team, 100-meter hurdles, eighth place. Mia Meyer, FCCLA State Competition Parliamentary Procedure Team, first place. Matthew Owens, Basketball, Boys Basketball, first team. Isabella Rizek, Outdoor State Track and Field, Indoor State Track, All-State Team, 800-meter relay, fifth place, 4x8 team, fourth place. Caitlin Scott, FCCLA State Competition Parliamentary Procedure Team, first place. Victoria Shute, FCCLA State Competition Parliamentary Procedure Team, first place, National Power of One Award winner. Congratulations, Victoria. Christian Siegler, FFA Small Engines, Troubleshooting Competition, first place at the State Fair of Virginia. All right. Jamie Sponsler, FCCLA State Competition Parliamentary Procedure, first place. And before we announce the last winner, we just want to let all of our LHS students know, please, when you leave, go into the hallway and grab a picture beneath our oars because we row the boat together, and there'll be somebody out there from the division waiting on you. So, our last person from Luray High School is Anna Wood, State Cross Country Meet, Indoor and Outdoor Track and Field, All-State Team, 800-meter relay, fifth place, sixth in the 1,600-meter run, ninth overall in the State Cross Country Meet, 4x8 team, fourth place. Great job. All of our LHS folks can now exit. We are so proud of you all. Great job. Hey, John. Thanks for doing this.
This is great.
It's good. These are good days.
Oh, yeah.
It's all about.
It is. I mean, these days when it's good to be a board member.
Yeah, yeah.
It's plenty of days.
These are fun days.
Yeah.
Now introducing our state winners from Page Middle. Emily Pauldwell, FCCLA State Competition, second place in a silver medal in Food Innovations. Aurelia Campbell, FCCLA State Competition, Silver in Promote and Publicize at FCCLA State Competition. Great job. It's all right. It's okay. Great job. Yeah. Dylan Couch, FCCLA, second place in a silver medal in Say Yes to FCS. Amelia Fina, second place in a silver medal in Promote and Publicize. Alexia Jenkins, FCCLA Interior Design, third place. Navea Jewell, FCCLA Repurpose and Redesign Bronze. Zoe Knowles, FCCLA Repurpose and Redesign Bronze. Kylie Reiner, FCCLA Interior Design, third place. Elizabeth Seals, FCCLA Competed in FCCLA Knowledge Test. Avery Sellers, FCCLA Second Place in a Silver Medal in Interpersonal Communication. Isabella Springer, FCCLA Silver in Promote and Publicize at FCCLA State Competition. Elizabeth Wood, FCCLA First Place in Gold Medal in Fashion Construction and won the Chapter Leadership Award. Mia Zandahas, FCCLA Second Place in a Silver Medal in Food Innovations, and Silver Medal in Food Innovations. All right. Page Middle, you can now exit and get your picture taken beneath the oars. Keep rowing the boat. We're so proud of you. Great job. You got Tanner.
Tanner's here.
He's here. Just got off work. All right. Next up for PCTC, Tanner Weaver, Skills USA Electrical Wiring Competition, first place, district and state level, 14th place in the national competition. All right. Great job, Tanner. Looks like Tanner, you can get a solo shot beneath the oars. Row the boat, man. We're proud of you. Yeah. It is. I was going to, I got some work with the house I need done.
We did something like some speech meeting.
This is all you. That's it? Thank you, Ms. Clark. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So, our minutes from July are posted for review. Everybody will review them. They'll be on the consent agenda next time. Ms. Miller, monthly financials?
Yes. Good evening, board members. You have been provided with the monthly financials for July, where the operating expenditures and revenues were $3,812,170.91. Please note that the July financials are operating off of the original approved budget. So, at the bottom of the monthly financial report, you will see the Board Approved Resolution Number 2026-01. And so, along with the, what I wanted to tell you is that for the month of August, we'll be operating off of that new budget with that resolution, updated budget. And then, along with the financial statements, you've been provided with a local match calculation that was balanced with the treasurer's office. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Dr. Alter, instructional update.
Good evening, Chair Gordon, members of the board. Dr. Huber. I'll just say, first of all, that it is great to be here. I've only been in Page for three weeks, and it has been a really, really great experience for me, I have to say. I've just had a really good time. I've enjoyed the team that we're working with. I don't want to steal Dr. Huber's thunder, but we had a really good day yesterday with all of our convocation. I know a number of you were there, but it's just a lot of energy, and I just really enjoyed my, my time here. So, thank you for the opportunity. For the instructional update, I'm going to be sharing a number of items. Some of them may fall more into the HR operations area, particularly around new teacher orientation, but it seemed timely because we're doing it right now. I talked to Dr. Johnson, and he said that was fine for me to, to share some of that information. So, we'll be talking about some celebrations. I want to give an update and about, in a summary about summer school. We'll be discussing, as I mentioned, new teacher orientation and support for new teachers as we go through the year. Our PD, professional development we're doing for teachers. And then finally, Ms. Hamel's going to talk to you about the Virginia Literacy Act. So, those will be the items for our agenda today. So, celebrations and recognitions, this was something that Dr. Huber shared yesterday at the convocation, which we're very excited. You can see here that Page County Public Schools has shown tremendous growth and achievement since 2022. They've gone from 95th to 55th in the Commonwealth, which is significant. To give you some context, there's 131 or 32 school divisions, I can't remember off the top of my head. So, we're talking about Page County in many ways now well above the 50th percentile and, and just doing amazing things with academic achievement. And I just can't say that, I couldn't be more impressed by the progress that has been made over the last number of years. So, congratulations to the staff and the leaders in this division for making that progress. And then specifically, Page County High School was shown to have made greater gains, the top 10 of schools in the CIP consortium that we are a part of over the course of, from last year, 2024 to 2025. So, just great gains in that school. So, congratulations to, to that staff and to those leaders there as well. So, congratulations to them. Summer school, just a brief update here, just some of the, the facts there. You can see that there was a, a summer school that took place at all three of, three levels between the dates of June 16th and July 2nd. You can see the number of students that were attending at the elementary and middle school level. That's remediation. We're trying to help kids who, that's a long time in the summer, right, to go without instruction. So, this is a way to keep from some of that backsliding that can sometimes happen during the summertime. And for our high school students, an opportunity for them to earn some credits. Sometimes that can be kids who didn't pass a class in the, during the school year. In order for them to stay on track for graduation, this is an opportunity for them to, to do that. So, congratulations to those students, and thank you to the staff and teachers who work to make that happen. They're giving up some of their time in the summer as well, right? That's not always easy to do. So, we thank them for that. So, here's a picture of the new teachers in Page County. So, there are 30 new teachers coming to Page this year. That is actually a decrease from the last two years in the number. So, this shows there's a good retention. I, I learned yesterday in the convocation that, like, more than 90% retention rate of teachers, which is very high for this region and for the state in general. So, it is clearly showing that when people come, they work here in Page, they want to stay here. That says a lot about, I think, the culture and that this is the place that people want to stay. That's not easy. There's nothing more difficult right now than getting and retaining good teachers, right? So, the less teachers you have to replace, the better off you're going to be, right? So, we're excited about that and the fact that we didn't have as much attrition and, and needed to hire that. But we have a good crew here. In fact, one of the individuals is interesting. I, I saw him at the, the new teacher orientation back last week. He walks up to me, and he was a, a high school classmate of mine. And I have no idea how, I hadn't seen him for 30, what, almost 40 years, and I remembered his name. I have no idea how that happened, right? So, he was a unique guy in high school, so that, maybe that's why. So, as far as new teacher orientation goes, we had three days of that. The first day, last Friday, was just for our teachers who are seeking their initial licensure. So, there were, I think, were 15 or so of those folks that came to Luray, and it was important to just work with those teachers individually at the beginning. These are folks that haven't gone through all the teaching preparation classes and those types of things. So, this was an opportunity for the instructional staff to talk with them and just help give them some of the baseline, baseline foundational ideas about, about teaching. And I'll talk about some additional support we'll be providing them as well. But that's just an important time for them, for us to get to know them and for them to kind of become acclimated to the, to the culture of the school division and to, to get up to speed a bit on some of the basics of, of teaching and, and working with students, those types of things. This week on Monday and Tuesday, we had all of our teachers, again, the 30 teachers, they were all at Luray High School, and you can see here some of the topics that were included in that orientation with those folks. The next slide, you'll see there's some, yes, I have pictures coming up. This was a slide that I was particularly pleased with and impressed with that was shared during that presentation. And it talks about the 25 things that great teachers do, and I don't know if you can see them or not from where you're at, but one of the things that I'll point out about it is that if you look at that list, the vast majority of that list is talking about connecting with kids, having relationships, these kind of emotional intelligence things that we talk about, right? Those are the things that are important about teaching. As I mentioned before, we have teachers that maybe haven't been through all the teacher preparation programs and those types of things. Those are things we can actually teach them to do. These are the types of things that it is harder to teach, right? We want to find people that can do these things, right? Are reflective, they're, have a positive attitude, they expect that students can succeed. That's the type of thing that we want to really promote, and that's what makes a good teacher, right? You think back on the teachers that you remember as a student, and I suspect it wasn't because they were great at knowing the Pythagorean theorem, right? Being really, you know, strong in their content area while important is not the most important thing, right? The connection is what matters. So, I just really, that's, that's what we're trying to get across to, to teachers, both new and more veteran. Next picture is, or just a variety of pictures that you can see there of the teachers working in the presentations. There was an opportunity for them to have lunch with principals, and they received a gift from the, from the division. And so, this is just a way of welcoming those folks in and hopefully making them feel like they're a part of the family. Support for new teachers. I mentioned that, you know, teaching's hard, right? Teaching is, and it's not getting easier necessarily. And so, we want to provide the type of support that we can for, for our staff and be sure that they feel like they are prepared and have a place to go for questions and do, got to get answers to those questions and those types of things. So, again, we talked about the day-long professional development for teachers, working towards licensure. I forgot, date's incorrect, it should be the 9th. It was on last Friday. And again, those session topics, as I mentioned, curriculum and lesson planning, teamwork in special education, classroom routines and management, some of those, again, foundational skills. There is a year-long new teacher mentor program that'll be led by Jennifer Hitt and Emily Demone. Demone, thank you. And you can look at the next slide that talks about this program and what that will include. Support for new teachers so they return to become veteran teachers and future mentors, right? So, getting first, through that first year is important. You look at the statistics, and, and teachers who leave the profession often do that in the first three years. We want to give them as much support as we can. Help new teachers connect with other professionals within the division, right? Having that camaraderie and having that support is important. Help new, oh, gotta go back. Thank you. Help new teachers build relationships within their school, both with students but with their colleagues and with administrators and other staff members, and provide new teachers with the tools to find success during the most challenging year of teaching, right? I, I can still remember back to my first year of teaching in 1993, and I still apologize to those kids when I see them in the community because it, it was not an easy year. And I had gone through a, a full training program, and so, I had been, received that kind of preparation, but it's, it is a lot, right? So, having these types of programs is so important, and having an intentional program that, that will support them, and you'll see on the next slide here, that there are going to be eight opportunities, eight times in which these teachers will be coming and working with Ms. Hitt and Ms. Demone and bringing in guest speakers and other people to provide their expertise to help provide, provide that support to those folks as well. So, and you can see, this is a slide for them, that, about what is required of them as they, as they come through, and you can see that in your materials as well. Professional development. So, just today and tomorrow, teachers and on, next week, teachers will be, are, and are going through and participating in professional development. I mean, you can see, there's a, a very nice schedule here. I don't expect you to be able to read that, but you can see there's a wide range of, of opportunities for teachers to, to receive that professional development. And I'll say that it's a tribute to them, too, that they're engaging in this, right? So, the week before school, it is a hard time often to be getting professional development, right? They have all these things on their mind, they have rooms to get ready, and they have, you know, lessons to prepare, but there's important information that we want to be sure that teachers are receiving, that they understand the direction that we're headed. Again, things like yesterday with the convocation, those are important also just from an emotional lift for people, so trying to make this both something they can get good information and knowledge from, but also feel like they're inspired as they work through. So, again, you can see special education, student services, instruction, technology. We have lots of opportunities for, for them. And I will say to teachers also, because of sort of the extended number of, of teacher workdays, they do have a lot of time, or more time, I should say, in their, in their classrooms to be able to prepare as well, which can ease some of that anxiety. Okay. So, we're going to now transition to the Virginia Literacy Act. I'm going to ask Ms. Hamel to come up and talk about this.
Good evening. As Dr. Alter shared, I'm Sarah Hamel, I'm the new Director of Teaching and Learning in Page County. I'm going to echo his remarks about just being generally glad to be here. The people have been wonderful, helping me get up to speed. So, getting out to buildings, meeting principals and, and meeting staff, it's been outstanding. One of my focal points as the Director of Teaching and Learning is certainly the Virginia Literacy Act. This is a piece of legislation that, that sort of went live, if you will, last year and included the state's stance on the science of reading and leveraging what's called high-quality instructional materials as we're teaching reading and writing to students. Last year, it was focused on K3 only, and this year, it has extended all the way up to eighth grade. So, there's some requirements around what, what materials we can use, there's requirements around amount of intervention we're providing in K3, and then the time limit is not the same in 4-8, but we are required to provide intervention, which follows our multi-tiered systems of support. So, our response to this, we've updated the Division Literacy Plan that's been submitted to the state. I'll skip down a couple. That's been presented. That's been presented to elementary and middle school administrators so they can lead through that at the building level, of course, as well. I am having, and and they are coming actually tomorrow, to present ongoing meetings with the Virginia Literacy Partnership, which is a body through the University of Virginia that is sort of the boots on the ground around helping schools make sure that they are following the best practices and meeting the criteria outlined in the Virginia Literacy Act. So the two ladies that that represent our region, among others, Ryan Dean and Maggie Copper, I've known them professionally for a few years, and and being able to work with them here has been great. So they're presenting multiple sessions to staff tomorrow. They're also, they're also coming in, you'll see on September, this is newest to the middle schools. Elementarys kind of have have seen it coming down the pipe. Elementarys are more ready, middle schools, less staff, less interventionist, so they're going to require more support. And Maggie and Ryan are going to come out on September 26th after we do the assessments, and they will facilitate the writing of what's called student reading plans for any student who's considered at risk. We have to write a plan to help close those gaps, progress monitor, and go through there. So they're going to come out and support us through those efforts. Of course, we've posted reading specialist positions for the middle schools. We don't have those hired at this point, but we're optimistic and hoping that we'll be able to get some additional support at the building level. I mentioned the PD. An ongoing training this year, it's in our literacy plan, there's some modules that we need to get taken care of, training on the science of reading, and then also training on the assessment system, which is the Virginia Language and Learning Screener, vowels it's called. So lots of training happening, both in person and virtually for staff to help bring them up to speed. Speaking about intervention, one of the things the state has required is there's approved lists for core instruction that everyone gets, for supplemental instruction, and then for interventive or the intervention piece. And we have to be abiding by, meaning choosing resources from those lists moving forward. And the intervention materials that we're currently using, Sunday system is being leveraged for special education as part of this, as we're intervening there. Spire is another program that's being leveraged by our reading specialist. And Lexia is an ongoing program that we've had that helps with reading intervention, and it's used in the general education classrooms as a way to supplement and provide some intervention at that level. Finally, we this year, in and around November, will start a committee up to lead a curriculum adoption. We have to, again, a high-quality instructional material emphasis. We have to look ahead and adopt a curriculum that meets the state criteria. So we'll be going through that process this year as well. That's the Reader's Digest version of the Virginia.
Are there any questions or comments by the board?
I have a couple of questions. So for the ladies that are coming from UVA to offer that support, is that like a state-mandated thing, or is that university seeing that gap and that need in our public schools?
It's a partnership through VDOE and UVA. UVA is is a well-known sort of, I refer to them as a big tent in our area. So it is, they work in concert with each other. I'm not sure, I've not read that it's an expectation that you have to work with the Virginia Literacy Partnership, but I think we've.
Well, no, it's great. I mean, I was just wondering if the state saw the gap, or you know what I mean, if the university.
A lot of the research out of UVA is what drove the legislation.
Right.
So so it's, they're completing that cert.
Okay.
And it's something that we asked them to do because it's free.
Yes.
It's a phenomenal resource for us.
More hands, fewer tasks.
And they just said, we'll do whatever we can to help you. And I was like, oh, and Sarah then consulted.
And then for the reading specialists for middle, is that something that, I know that there's like training and things that come with that, but I guess, how about I ask this, would someone need a certification specific, could we do that at a grow your own if we weren't to get those applicants? That's what I'm trying to ask.
Oh, that falls into that, yeah.
So the reading specialist is a is a specific endorsement in Virginia, and it is a master's level. So so teachers often will go back to get their masters above and beyond their content to become a reading specialist. So for instance, we know we have at least one in our division that's excited to pursue this, but then you get into the situation of, yes, but we have to make sure we can cover that classroom as well. Timing with the year is is a bit of a challenge, but but yeah, so but you do have to have a master's. It's, it could be a grow your own where somebody could go back to school, but it's master's level work.
So one more question on that, is that specific to like whether it be primary, secondary, or a region special?
Just reading specialist.
Okay. That's all.
My question is on constant. I've got a, I've got a question. So Dr. So much comment. So Mrs. Berner from LaRae Middle School retired, and I remember visiting her last summer right before she started, they were getting ready to start school. And as being the department head there, she, she spent a lot of time with the new people there, and we came back to her, her room, and she said, man, I really feel good about how I've got them where they're at, but I don't know if my room's going to be ready. And one of the things she asked for is in the future, if we could have just a little bit of break in some things for some of those department heads that are spending other time, different places, allow them to get their rooms together. So I wanted to bring bring that up. And the other thing is, Mrs. Miller and I have talked about this a lot, early on, being able to get out and with our new teachers and about control of the classroom, you know, you know, you know your content, but can you control the room? And I think that's, I just would encourage our principals and even the folks up in the central office to make sure we're getting there early, taking care of problems early before they become a, you know, it becomes almost a lack of lack of respect to the teacher. And that's just two, two comments that I've learned the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark, DSA politics.
Good evening, Board. You guys may get tired of seeing me here before long. So for informational items this week, you've received an attachment that this is a summary update. It is the 8/14 one. Yeah. And so most of those this time around are just clarifications, wording, updates, making sure everything ticks and tocks. There are two that I want to bring to your attention tonight, JFGR, which is our drug testing of student athletes and student drivers. We went in and clarified some language after having several years at this. Principals, Mr. Cale and Ms. Meadows and myself met and went through and just clarified meanings of what first test positive is, when does that occur, and things like that, and that there is no disciplinary consequence, this is a proactive program, so that we can get in front of that if we should get any results from that. So that was all there. And then we have a new policy, JN, student fees, fines and charges. That just sort of wraps up everything that's always been occurring. You know, if we have issues that come up with, you know, home books and we need to get that replaced, or if we have parking fees, athletic fees, it just puts it in a nice place that says, yes, this is what we're doing. Any questions on that? Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell, vehicle auction using gut deals, policy DN.
Good evening, Board members. This is the informational part of this presentation tonight. Pursuant to policy DN, we are seeking formal authorization from you to proceed with auctioning off some of our vehicles, a zero-turn mower, Ford Explorer, a dump truck, and four of our buses that are over 30 years old and are not actively in service. If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Dr. Huber, superintendent's update.
It'll be tough to me to, for me to follow a lot of what just happened. And I'll start by just saying how appreciative I am of our team in this room and also those not in this room that have prepared us to start the year. And I hope that it's evident the amount of effort that these folks have gone through to get us to this point, as well as our teachers, our custodians, our transportation staff, our nutrition staff. It's it's humbling, and I shared that yesterday, and I'll continue to say it until people tell me to stop, but I'm just so excited about the team that we've assembled and what we have going into this school year. And I hope as a board and as a community, you all can see that through the work. So good evening. I will go ahead and get started with a brief update, just to kind of highlight some things that have been occurring over the summer and tell you where we're headed.
All right. So just to start, and Dr. Alderfer talked about this a little bit, what a great start to the week. It's been a busy week. It's been a busy summer, just so everyone is aware. We had a great start to new teacher orientation put on by our HR and finance and benefits team, our instructional team, 30 new teachers onboard. I was there in the very beginning, and it was an exciting time. I always love this time of year because it brings new life and energy to to our team and to the boat, right? And so you'll see a couple of those topics or quite a few topics that were covered around technology, special education, the power of what-if thinking, which I presented to the group, time for our new teachers to get to know their school, the topic of professionalism, which is important to us, and and how do we carry ourselves, and what are our standards of excellence as teachers and educators? Instruction, our mentor program overview, we had a teacher panel and then lunch with our principals and the Educational Association engagement. So just very excited about the work and planning that went into that for our group and how that really launched us into a successful week. And I want to thank everybody in this room for their contributions to that and those who aren't here as well. Convocation, as many of you were there yesterday, was a lot of fun. So you've got a great picture of a team there in the boat. We had a great keynote speaker, Dr. Rollins Fells, who delivered a great message to the group that was very much tailored to us and what we're doing as a division. We were able to recognize our support staff of the year, teachers of the year, and transportation staff of the year. Great energy, and it really inspired me as I looked across that auditorium yesterday and saw the energy and the positivity, and it made me just feel proud to be the superintendent of Page County Public Schools. And I think it was a great start to our year. Back to school, we have orientations coming up. You can see the schedules there, and they're all listed and very specific to each program. We have scheduled events, as you can see, for most of our transition grades, you know, sixth grade and ninth grade at middle school and high school, and then our come-and-go events, which means they're just a window where our our kids and our families can come and visit the school, and then elementary again as well. So we're excited to get kids back in the building. There's nothing that brings more life and joy into a school than when the kids come. And that's a fun moment and an exciting moment for us as a school division. Do you want to highlight one item that we've really focused on this summer is registration? And it is important for everybody to know and for the board and our community that parent portal is open. We need registration done by every family, and we will not release schedules or class placements until you do your registration. And that is for many reasons. It's for data integrity that I know Mr. Samples will surely appreciate, but it's also for safety, right? And so when when someone drops their child off with us, we become responsible for them. And if we don't have a good phone number and a good address and assurance is signed off on, we're being irresponsible. So we are asking everyone to please make sure that we're focusing on safety, we must have updated information, and if we don't, we're not going to release schedules and class placements until we do. It's not meant to be punitive, but we have plenty of folks at the school level that will help with that. We have computers available, we can walk people through it, but that is a focus of ours over the summer, and I want to thank our tech team and our building principals for working on that. So Blake, thank you, and your team for focusing. Exciting dates. So division-wide professional learning, the week continues with high energy tomorrow. So it's a full day. This crew behind me and and others that are not here have worked tirelessly to plan this day out, set up great opportunities for our teachers and staff to learn and set folks up for success. We've had a great partnership with our special education department, Mrs. Hilliard and Instruction.
Our teachers.
There you go. And just working so closely together to try to make tomorrow a meaningful day and work as a team as we move through this. We have the fair coming up. I got my flyer today. I'm really excited about that. I saw about the truck and tractor pull, live music, demolition derby, and great food. So I'm excited about that, and that's coming up here soon. First day of school, August 25th, and believe it or not, September 24th is Q1 progress reports. It's coming around. Our next professional learning day that our instructional staff's working on is September 26th. That will be a workday and professional learning as well needed. So these are exciting times, and it's my favorite time of the year. 100-day plan update, as I promised our community, our staff here and the board, the meetings with all principals have occurred as outlined in the plan. Our director and supervisor meetings are ongoing, probably every day right now. Stop-start-continue events are being scheduled, and those will be times when I'm in buildings just to spend time with staff, just to hear and listen about what do we need to stop, what do we need to start, what do we need to continue that's going well. Our board of supervisors, we're continuing to commit to that. Convocation, as I just mentioned, the new teacher orientation attendance and the presentation that I provided there, which was outlined in my plan. Our RRMM CIP building visits are going to start very soon. So that's exciting, and that was also part of of my plan as well. We anticipate that to probably be September, just let kids get settled. But we intentionally did that because you don't get good information when buildings are empty, right? You know, you get them when they're being used. And so we're excited about that, and we've had communication over the past few days about that. And I had a great day. Paul and I drove out to the transportation safety training and picnic at the lake. I got a chance to talk with our transportation staff and and see them. What a great turnout. Kudos to to those folks for being there and engaging, and that was a highlight of my day today. So Paul, thanks for showing me the ropes and getting me out there.
We had never been to Lake Arh.
Yeah. I should have brought my fishing pole.
Get your kayak out, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
You can row it.
So open up for questions and comments. There you go. It's been a long week. So again, we're just, our theme is all about enthusiasm, working together, and leading with heart. And you all have heard me talk about this, and I will continue to stress it to this staff and to our division and community, is when we lead with heart and we teach with heart and we have unconditional love, successful. So, thank you. That's my opinion.
Great job. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, please.
Yes, good evening again, Board. You have been provided with the claim certification, where the operating fund, Fund One is $281,165.33. Fund Five Food Service is $49,487.24, with a total expenditures of $330,652.57. And along with that, you have a list of claims and check registers have been provided. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer.
I'll make a motion that we approve the claims payment as presented.
Motion by Mr. Painter, second by Ms. Sullivan, to approve the claims payment as presented. Questions?
Yes.
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 So last month, I brought a rather lengthy list of VSPA policy updates, most of which were just various changes. The only one I want to bring back up is our policy on heat and our practices and procedures. And we are following the VHSL guidelines and implemented those in that document that was sent back out to you with the wet bulb globe, which takes into consideration heat, humidity, wind, sun, cloud cover, all of that. And so when you see that policy and it says 90 degrees on it, it doesn't mean 90 as in temperature, it means on the wet bulb globe. And so when we hit those different marks, they are going to begin restricting access. In fact, some of our teams, you know, this week had to step back and wait either for the evening to come a little bit later, or they moved inside and did different weight room and other activities inside. So athletic trainers and A.D.s are absolutely on top of that, and they're training our coaches as well. So we are asking that those items be approved tonight, and if there's any questions I can answer to those, I'm happy to do that.
I make a motion, we approve the VSPA policy updates as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Irberbell, second by Ms. Sullivan, to approve the VSPA policy updates as presented. Questions?
Yes.
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 Mr. Bell, Vehicle Auction.
Earlier this evening, I presented information related to our proposed vehicle auction, and now I'm asking for that formal.
One question, but where do they, where do you list these vehicles?
What our plan to do is to list them on Gov Deals, which is, it's an online portal for governments to dispose of their surplus property.
I make a motion, we approve the vehicle auction as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Carter, and second by Ms. Irberbell, to approve the vehicle auction using Gov Deal. Mr. Painter.
Yes.
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 Well, I'd just like to say, after being at the convocation yesterday, it was so energizing. And then hearing everything that all the different teams have been working towards, how lucky are our children? It came up a good while back, and somebody said, why not Page County? And we've used that theme along. When you think about larger cities and the size of the schools and the size of the population, our children are real people, and they mean something to every teacher, coach, principal, custodian, cafeteria, you name it, they mean something to every one of those people. And in the world we live in today, what they're getting when they go into that building is priceless. And it gives me cold chills just to think about all the work that you all have put in to making this a place where children will not only learn, they will accomplish, and they are loved, and they are somebody. And so I'm really excited to see the year come alive, and, you know, yeah, there'll be ups and downs, but tell me someplace where there's not. But when you, like yesterday, you got to see a lot of different things and hear about, and it's just refreshing and exciting to know that every one of you throughout that works for this system, you can't all get into the same canoe, but when you get in it, there ain't no stopping you. And I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I know it's going to be a great year.
I think we're, I think we really are well positioned to have a tremendous year. I think I wrote that in a text to somebody yesterday. I really, really do like the fact that we're recognizing the students like we did tonight. It's so important that they feel the love, the unconditional love that I think is coming out of this division, which is, which is absolutely critical. The tremendous gains that we have made in this division and where we're going to go, being at the 90%, over 90% retention rate is pretty fantastic. I mean, 30 new teachers, but a lot of those folks, we didn't have to have 50 new teachers. I mean, it's, it really speaks a lot to the culture of our division and the county. It's working. It's working. Convocation yesterday was just, it was well attended, great energy, and I think Jackie said it best, I mean, it was, it was a very impressive event. I would appreciate that we could continue to get some updates on the professional development and these support programs. I'd like to, I'd like to see how, you know, get some feedback on how well they're working, what you've identified are some of the key issues that we need to concentrate on, and then, you know, how are we going to correct those items or deficiencies that we're identifying. But I think the, the plan that you laid out for the support structure for the new teachers and for even the teachers that have been here for a while, especially with these new reading programs, I mean, it's, I think we're, like I said, we're well positioned. I think we're going to have a tremendous year, and I look forward to the success that we're going to see. But thank you for everybody's hard work. It's, it's so evident. I mean, you'd have to be blind not to see that you guys have been working very, very hard, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, I think having the kids here was, was the best. That was amazing, and I really, I'm not kidding, I wish we could do that. I hope we can do that every, every meeting, just to have kids here, not because they just, you know, want to get a paper sign for community service, but that they genuinely want to be here and want to learn. I'm curious, not to, I know you wrote down some more things, but I'd be curious to see how many of our kids that were invited to summer school didn't come, and maybe why, if we can get some feedback from those families, whether it be communications, I mean, if they have things, I mean, just to kind of find out why our kids are missing, you know, just, especially at the high school level, the opportunity to get those extra credits. I think it's amazing to see, you know, we can share about all the things that we're doing, but I don't think anybody really realizes that isn't fruits on the ground, all the details and the pieces that go into doing everything that we do, and how meticulous you have to be. I mean, Ms. Hamble, you came up and you talked about the Virginia Literacy Act, and you did it so gracefully. It's like, oh, here's this thing that we're doing, but it's a lot. That is a beast to take on. So just all the, all the energy that, you know, that goes into everything, I think is important to recognize. But I think with Dr. Huber, you briefly touched on that what-if mindset and really just changing mindset. And, you know, I joked about this when we had our retreat, but if we can keep this energy and optimism throughout the whole year, not just for us, but for our kids, and continue to recognize, or get recognized them, I mean, it's a complete shift in how we get through the school year. So like you all, I'm excited, and let's sustain it, sustain this energy, so.
Good stuff, everybody. You've all said everything. Yeah, it was great to see the students. That is what it's about, but it's also really exciting to know that we have the retention rate that we have. So to the returning staff, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And please just use your talents and pour it into these people that are coming in and let them feel welcome. And to the new people, welcome, we're happy to have you. And all the work is just evident how hard everybody is working. Yesterday was really exciting, and I think people left there feeling uplifted and ready to go. So here's to a great start to school year. Thank you.
So you've continued excellence with the board retreat, the convocation. I love watching, Jackie's a former cheerleader, and she was just bebopping and everything up there in the front row, enjoying all that. The kids were as energetic as the staff, which is huge. You don't always get that. And the percent of improvements that we've seen in four or so years, it's been a great phenomenon. It's been great. And I want to talk about summer school. Summer school tells me that we're not giving up on the kids and they shouldn't give up on themselves. So I appreciate everybody that did things in that summer school, important stuff, plus the ones that graduate. It's huge. Finishing something means, don't understand what it means to people, but finishing something's important. A story. So I didn't know what Dr. Rollins fell, why she had such an affinity for Page County. So I asked her that, and what she told me was, is that she wanted to start an FCC LA in her school some time ago, and they didn't have a sponsor because it was a smaller school division. And our county sponsored her so she could be in the FCC LA. Now that tells you how, what a welcoming, inviting community we have. And she, she tears up when she's talking about it. By the way, I do send videos and pictures of Dr. Fox still at her old number, and she puts hearts by everything I send. So I sent some things to convocations, things you've done recently. I talked, ran into Coach May, football coach at Page County High School, and it's a student that we know, I mentored him, and he was always a kind of a shy guy, kind of out, would probably stay on the out, down the fringes of everything, and not really be involved. So in the mentor, I was just saying, you've got to be in two sports, you've got to be in a club in the middle of them, you've got to stay involved all the time with good people, and you become better. Well, the coach was telling me that the other day in the weight room, he's playing football, and he's not a big guy, but he tried to put up 135-pound bench press. And the coach said that he was shaking, and the whole gym stopped what they were doing and started rooting him on.
Oh, dear.
And he shook all the way up till he got that bench press up, and the gym exploded.
Yeah.
And he said, this kid now has changed because of that. So that's the things that you guys do, teachers do, coaches do, and that's what our community needs to be about. We're winning. It may not feel like we're winning, but we are winning. We know it, we're winning this time. So I appreciate everybody for this year.
I get your last, and I won't say anything. They say it all. I do hate, I do want to apologize for missing yesterday, but I have my second grandbaby. Hey, I have to be a coach in the delivery room now. I'm not quite as nice, but. When Miss Sienna was born, so I'm very happy for Tristan and Nia, but I do hate that I missed because convocation is always so much fun. It's always exciting to be excited at the beginning of the year, but I'd like, like Ms. Alger said, I'd like to see us carry that through on the days when we're like, oh, you know, it's been a long time till we had a break, or when we, when we get to talk to the challenging parents or even challenging staff, just remember that energy from a convocation and how hard everybody really is working. We've seen tremendous growth, and it has been amazing to see the growth, and I'm just excited to see where it continues to go. So thank you and your staff and our board and, and everybody, down to the coaches, the custodians, nutritional services, everybody works hard to make sure our kids get the best start they can get. And, you know, why not Page County? Because we can do it. We just saw, think Alex White's going to go to Yale. So we've got kids doing amazing things, and they all have that opportunity. Thanks to everybody that in this division works hard. So thank you all.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm stealing.
Okay, next time we need to start.